Welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of August 8, 2023. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. For the folks at home, I'd like you to be able to see tonight's agenda. We start off as we do with every first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. That's a snapshot of finances of the township. Then the clerk's report, a couple of announcements, any public comments that folks would like to make. Then we dive right into authorizing to go out to bid for highway materials. Even though it's August, we actually go out to bid for winter and 2024 materials for road use. We'll briefly discuss, although I know that Julia is not with us tonight, so I'm sure it'll be a very brief discussion about the community forest conservation program. And then we're going to discuss and potentially approve a resolution to the conservation easement and CPF expenditure. It's a follow-up to the approvals that we've already made on the West Cookingham properties. We will skip number four to reapprove the bond. We're waiting till we have a fourth town board member to reapprove that bond resolution. We're going to set a public hearing on highway weight limits. We're doing a slight modification of our previous approval to guide the trucks to appropriate roadways as we are noticing a dramatic increase in commercial traffic making its way through residential communities. And then we have a resolution to go out to bid for St. Margaret's Plumbing and a redo of the H-Track system since we only had one bid that we rejected at our previous meeting. And we have some correspondence. And so we shall begin. The supervisor's report, this is for the period ending July 31st. We started off with an opening balance of 8.25 million. We have receipts of 492,725, discursments of 420,48. We have an ending balance of $8,331,000. You have budget adjustments for you for both July and also August as they relate to transactions we have in August. You have with you also the variance reports. Would members do have any question?
No.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the supervisor's report? So move.
Second.
Okay, all in, or I. We also have the town clerk's report for the period ending July 31st. Deanna, would you like to read it?
Town clerk's report for the period of July 1st to July 31st, 2023. The total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $7,428.58. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $34. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $22.50. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $240.92. Total state, local, total state, county, and local revenues, $7,726. And...
You have some vouchers as well?
Yes. So I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 30771 to 30877, processed in the month of July 2023, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
Some move.
Second. And myself, I thank you very much. Okay. Couple of announcements we have. Want to acknowledge the achievements of three Eagle Scouts. Christian Topman, whose project was to install basketball hoops for CYO teams. Jackson Taylor, whose project was to build four nature observation stations with wooden benches at Fern Cliff Forest Preserve. And Jackson Reinhardt, who built weatherproof food storage boxes for Red Hook Harvest that provide food to Red Hook students in need. So we'd like to congratulate them. There will be a ceremony in about 10 days or so. I'll be in attendance, but suffice it to say, in order to become an Eagle Scout, they have a lot of requirements and badges that they accumulate over the years. And so we would like to acknowledge their efforts. Moving on to what also motivates us and inspires us pancakes. Sunday, August 13th, at the Elks Lodge. And it's from 8:30 to 11:00. So I imagine we could eat quite a few pancakes going after our time. And that's what we have for announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements? Here we are in August. Obviously, the fair's coming up later this month. Anything else?
No.
We have some wonderful, specifically Community Day just last weekend. That was a very lovely event. But we'll be talking about September events at our next meeting. Okay, moving right along, public comment period. Would anybody like to make some public comments? Oh, Paul, come on up. And then Ken will do you next. Paul, you want to tell everybody your name?
Sure. Paul Fletcher Hill. Live in Red Hook. I think myself and a number of other residents had submitted public comment over email. I think the ones that I've seen have mostly been in favor of not approving an easement right now for Cookingham West and instead postponing that until there's a portion of the farm, especially in the village reserve, for at least some portion of housing, similar to what I think you all are considering doing on the Cookingham East property, which is a novel sort of marriage of conservation and housing. So I wonder if there's a chance to maybe review some of the comments that have been submitted over email here, so others could see that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. Kenny?
Good evening. Is this hot?
I don't know. You want to hit it and see if it is? It sounds like it.
Hi, Ken Miglerelli, Miglerelli Farm. I'd like to bring up the subject again about the, on the conservation easement, the homestead area. I just want to present this to the town board. The, I believe I asked Robert and I know I asked Karen, the mayor of Red Hook. If anybody contacted Jim Ross on the property adjacent to the project. The X is on that map is where the affordable housing is proposed. The highlighted area is Jim Ross's property. And it seems to me, again, that I implore you to reconsider what the homestead area is going to look like on this conservation easement. I mean, again, I've talked to almost all the farmers I know in Red Hook who agree that all the buildings should be in the homestead area. I mean, what I said at the public hearing on village, when I said 5%, well, that's a big 5%. A very strong 5%. And just having, now I'm hearing that there's 40 homes going into that area or 40, whatever, the amount of traffic going down that road, you know, any farmer would hate to see that amount of traffic going next to their homestead area. Looking at Jim Ross's property, it's like a perfect access to Cherry Street to have a road going into the affordable housing area. So I think it just needs to be reviewed again. Still all for the project of keeping the land with the conservation easement, but the homestead area really needs to be revisited. Okay?
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
And just for the public certification, you're speaking about the east side now as opposed to the west?
Correct, east side. Oh, and I did speak to Jim. You know, I mean, he's up in Eager's, as he said, and anything reasonable, he would be considered relinquishing that property. And he would work at the town and the village to see, you know, something more conducive for that area. Okay?
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to make something? Please come on, Masha.
Hi, everybody. My name is Masha. I think everybody can hear me, right?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, my name is Masha. I run Thriftified in Tivoli. I also live in Tivoli on Broadway as well. And I wrote public comment because it's easier for me to lay out my thoughts and bore you with everything. So I'm just going to read it as naturally as humanly possible. I first want to thank you for your work for this town and for your care and the time that you take regarding all of the decisions that you make and specifically Cookingham West and Cookingham East properties today, the Cookingham West. I'm really happy to hear that a portion of Eastern Parcel is taken for, or is slated at least, for affordable housing. Extremely important. Thank you for working on that during the housing crisis, which has and continues to impact me, my chosen family, and my friends. I'm familiar now, thanks to Robert, with the town's reasons for putting a permanent conservation easement on the West Parcel, some of them being the previous owner's preferences, the lack of an access road, and the desire to move the town center to the south. I, however, cannot support it in good faith for these reasons. A, I'm finding it hard to be convinced that it was purely impossible to come to a compromise and leave a small portion of the West Parcel out of the easement for housing specifically. I know that some of them were left out for the trails and wells, which is also extremely, extremely important. The seller has century-long family history in Red Hook and was clearly sweet to accept trails and new wells on the property. B, roads can be changed, reimagined, built and rebuilt. I won't pretend like I know a whole lot about it, but it seems to me that in the next several hundreds of years, a lot of things may change. So the lack of an access road is not a permanent issue and it doesn't have to be one. And a large part of the West Parcel is within the village of Red Hook. Considering the drastic effects of climate change and the resulting migration, a lot of which is already happening, but there will be a lot more. The ongoing housing crisis and the fact that conservation, quote unquote, doesn't even mean restoring land to its most biodiverse and ecologically sound state. It is strange to me that we are losing this potential sustainable development opportunity in the future, not even right now, in favor of keeping this land unchanged forever and ever. Yes, there are other parcels of land that may or may not be eventually available to the town, but why disregard Cookingham West by writing it off and thereby denying ourselves any sort of choice in the future? I do not in any way want to diminish the importance of farming and the benefit of enjoying beautiful local trails, but I do believe that this process could have benefited from a lot more public awareness and public input prior to this easement decision. I know there was limited time, but my point stands. To put it simply, 120-ish acres is a lot of land. We should be able to afford to be imaginative about it and to leave our future selves and hopefully our future generations more options for the security of housing. I also am really looking forward to the info session and Q and A with Robert McKeon this Thursday, August 10th. And I hope that tonight the town will consider postponing the easement decision in favor of continuing public discussion about housing until we can come to a better solution. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Masha. Anybody else?
If there's time.
Dan, yes, please.
Yes. Hi, everybody. My name is Dan Diokan. I live in Tivoli. Basically what Masha and Paul said, and I think Masha put it extremely well and elegantly. We have a bad housing crisis here, as you all know. Don't need to go through the statistics. We need to build more housing. We need to build housing that comes in all shapes and sizes, multifamily, single-family, and is aimed at a range of ages and income. And I think we need to build housing on places like Cookingham East and West for a lot of reasons that Masha outlined. These places are near to the village. They have potential for infrastructure. They have some municipal involvement. So I think they're great places to build the kind of dense housing that we need around here. Cookingham East was really happy to hear that it looks like housing will be a part of that. And I applaud the offer for making that happen. It seems like a really novel project that includes a unique collaboration between conservation organizations and affordable housing developers, which is great. Would love, love to see that same strategy applied, that same model applied to Cookingham West, which again, just seems like a terrific site for housing. So if housing is not going to be built in Cookingham West, I am not in favor of the town purchasing it. I know, and I just underline a lot of things that Masha said. It seems like there are problems, of course, with developing it, but there always are. And they seem to be ones that maybe we could overcome with some good planning. But thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? Hi.
Hi, my name is Ano Sifter. I am also a Tivolian. I wanted to speak about the same thing as well. I'm going to try to... So sorry to be reading off the film, but I'm used to having a podium to hide it.
That's okay.
So I was really glad to hear about the village purchasing this area of land. And I'm glad to hear that it's remaining with us and not just getting unfettered turned over to development. It's always good to hear that. Most in, like, strongly though, I was really excited to hear about the possible, possibility of affordable housing coming along with this. I'm a renter. I cannot imagine any in this current housing environment to ever own here. And the ever-rising cost of housing isn't just never-rising cost of real estate. It's also rising rent and it is leaving pretty much all of the working-class people I know kind of unable to find stable housing and to imagine it as part of our future. And I know a lot of us would like to be in this community long-term. So that's very important to me. As someone who has like a very large amount of respect for conservation and preservation, I worked in historic architectural preservation in the city for a while. I want us to take a moment to consider how sustainable and affordable housing is something that's not necessarily at odds with preserving the historic and, you know, community-based nature of this place. If we're trying to preserve community character, sustainable, healthy environment, and the sort of texture of land around here that we enjoy, part of that is going to include finding ways to house a wide array of different working people, not allow just, you know, mansions to go up. But also not, you know, have the all or nothing. Have we completely locked something down for no development? Or we let it go as a free-for-all? I think there's this strong possibility here to talk actively with the rest of the community and with planners to consider how stuff that is already on the table of integrating conservation and housing could be possible in both of these sections of the land. Because if, with that kind of creativity, we don't need to lose either of the things. We don't need to lose the chance at affordable housing. We don't need to lose the chance at a beautiful environment. They can, I believe they can coexist. And I'd like us to have a further conversation on that before anything is moved forward on with this easement.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make some comments?
Hi, everyone. My name is Agatha Vassilar and I live in Upper Red Hook. I submitted a longer public comment just before, so I won't read the whole thing, but just a few excerpts. Overall, my wish is that housing would be available on Cookingham West and that we not make a decision to move forward if that isn't a possibility. One, just from the Duchess County Housing Needs Assessment from March 2022. The county has a deficit of 6,600 low-income owner households and 2,100 low-income renter households. And even though Red Hook only represents 4% of the county's population, that's still plenty of work to do in terms of housing. Another way of looking at it is we have 150 high school seniors that graduate from Red Hook High School every year. And while I don't have exact figures, I would assume that most of them cannot afford to stay here or come back should they wish to because of housing affordability. And just the last little note, I think I can uniquely say, as being so involved with the Chamber of Commerce, is how challenging it is to run a business here in Red Hook. I talk to business owners every day. So many of them make ends meet because of tourists or because of online sales. And the more that we have people who are cost-burdened, who are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, the less, the fewer people we have who have purchasing power but spending power to spend time in our businesses and restaurants. And then my other just question about process. I know some other people submitted public comment shortly before the meeting. Are those being shared, read? Should we read them? What do you recommend?
Those letters become a matter of the public record. We don't read them, however.
But have you all personally read them before?
We have, yeah. We even got one just a few months before the meeting started.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi, my name is Polia Maliken. I live in Red Hook Village. And I didn't have a chance to write my own letter, so I wanted to tack on to my partner, Paul Sturtz's letter, which he did submit, so, and it's brief. "I speak as an educator. I was a farm and garden teacher last year. Now I'm a farm or gardener myself. I feel very strongly about conservation, but I also feel very strongly about affordable housing. So together, we want to strongly urge you to delay the approval of a conservation easement for Cookingham West. We wonder what the rush is to push this through tonight. As far as we can tell, there are no other competing bids on the table and certainly none that would preserve the land, which we're told second-hand is the seller's wish. It is a monumental decision to decide an important land like this in perpetuity. It can be argued that it's perhaps the most strategic property to be purchased in our lifetimes, one with vast implications for the village's business and district and the rest of the area's economic viability. The easement should not be rushed through without thorough public discussion, especially since so many of us have contributed many thousands of dollars to the CPF when we purchased our homes. This can't be fully accomplished tonight. My family loves Red Hook and appreciates our town's rural quality, but we are bungling the moment to not acknowledge the opportunity here to carve out a 10 to 20-acre portion of the less valuable soil just north of the Willowbrook Lane for attainable and affordable housing. Neither scenic Hudson nor the Duchess Land Conservancy objected to this idea, and Paul talked to them both. And the property owner has no leverage to demand that no housing carve-out be set aside. Farmland conservation is wonderful, but it is just pretty scenery, not a working, breathing farm without accommodating farm workers to live there. Also, it is highly likely that selling a property to a commercial monocrop farmer will result in this being a cornfield or equivalent with all its associated environmental costs. There are a lot of documented hazards associated with atrazine, for instance. The town has a unique opportunity here to encourage a sustainable, regenerative kind of farming. Should be noted that this is a tremendous amount of town resources to go to underwrite a kind of commodity-based, commercial farming that relies heavily on chemical inputs. So much better for scenic Hudson to work with the town on a more restrictive covenant for the farmland as it has at the Aesopus Agricultural Center north of Kingston and in Warwick, New York. This would encourage the kind of small farmers who would create tremendous value for our rural economy. A big farmer renting the land to them creates a feudal sharecropping system that is not the same as them owning their parcels. Why has this not been explored? Please do not dismiss the concerns you are hearing tonight as a reflection of a broad-based unease with an expedited process that's contrary to so many of our shared visions for our beloved town's future." I want to echo what some of my friends and neighbors have said and also thank you for all your service and your work and your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I possibly read a letter from somebody who couldn't come because they couldn't secure childcare for tonight?
I think we, I think we have the letter. We'll put that as a public record. Yeah. Would anybody else like to, to speak? Thank you all very much for both your written words and your spoken words tonight. We'll be covering that topic just in a few minutes. Okay, very good. Less interesting, but important. Each year, we go out to public bid for a wide variety of items to ensure we're getting the best pricing. Here's highway materials, all the exciting things that motivated you to come today, like gravel. Okay, so what we have tonight is the bid documents. And I want to thank our attorney to the town, our highway superintendent. Each year, they work together to prepare these documents for consideration. These items are hot mix asphalt, abrasives for snow and ice control, gold mixed patch, stone dust, processed item four, screen fill, rip rap, crushed stone, wash travel, topsoil. The advertisement calls for bids to be returned.
I think it's the 30th?
By the end of the month.
What did we say? Oh, I beg your pardon, this is a different one. So this is September 28th. Yep, so Theresa recited that.
For, I'm just looking for the return date.
Yeah, September 28th.
September 28th. So nearly the end of the month in September. That's when they typically are required to come in. We have preparation work to do in October. And then we award, generally speaking, later in October as we prepare for winter. We've got the bid specs. Any questions, town board members? Due Thursday, September 28th at 2:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. Who would like to move the resolution if they don't have any questions?
Number 60.
What's the number?
Number 60. Did it August 2023, authorizing the town clerk to advertise the request for sealed bids as I just described. Bill, are you moving that?
I am.
Second.
Christine, thank you very much. And myself, I. Okay, that is the exciting part of tonight's agenda. As I mentioned earlier, there's an opportunity brought to our attention by Julie, I believe it was, on this one. So maybe we'll table this till she's able to join us at our next meeting. But essentially, there's a grant opportunity. Application's due in the second week of October. It's for acquisition of forested lands. It's through the grants gateway. The goal is to fund municipal land acquisition for community forests, which are biotic wildlife habitat, flood mitigation, recreational opportunities, mental health, air quality, water quality, and to meet the obligations outlined in New York's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And I think it was very interesting that they call out mental health because there's a lot of evidence that shows that when people commune with nature, they tend to be in a better place. So all right, let's take that up at our next meeting to apply. I can't imagine we wouldn't want to apply, but we'll have a further discussion and get more input from Julia on that. more input from Julia on that. Okay, resolution to approve conservation easement and CPF expenditure cooking count west. Okay, so we had a lot of good comments, both written and spoken tonight, referencing what... Well, let's just suffice it to say, we have a diversity of opinion in our community. We often do on issues. We've heard a lot from folks who are very favorable to what's being proposed for the west side, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's the only opinion. And tonight, we're hearing a different opinion and a very valid opinion, frankly, about the potential for development and in particular affordable housing development for the west side. Certainly, it falls within what's being suggested, although I think somebody said north of Willowbrook Lane, maybe meant south of Willowbrook Lane. Much of it falls within the village boundaries. So obviously, again, reiterate, any development that is going to happen within the village is really up to the village, whether it transpires or not. All we can do is try to facilitate, whether it's conservation or affordable housing development. And we've taken significant steps in 2023 to do so, to redirect funding. We have a long history of these public-private partnerships, of which Cooking Ham West is one of those partnerships. And I would just like to say that the landowner can place their land under conservation easement without the involvement of the municipality. That can just happen and could have just happened on their own, and we would have no other public purposes. That land could have remained private. We would not have trails. We would not have protection of our water facility. We would not be able to connect to public parks. It is not imperative that landowners work with the municipality. My wife and I put our lands under conservation without the involvement of the municipality. So I just want to, you know, for the record, correct this notion that because the town is involved, that the easement, you know, would not have taken place had we chosen to go in a different direction. The easement could have been placed on this property, or it could have just been sold privately to a wealthy neighbor, for example, which I do believe would have been the option in this scenario, and there would be no public purpose or amenities with this particular property. So, you know, I just want to say what, many years ago, when I was a struggling actor and had the opportunity to study with Lee Strasberg, and he used to remind us, half an apple is still an apple. So I would just say that while we may be disappointed we're not able to satisfy you on this request for the west side, I do think that we feel good about the fact that we have been able to facilitate something on the east side, and we don't have the option of going in a different direction now. That said, there is always, and it's in the village of Red Hook, this property that you're speaking about, there is always the possibility of condemnation. If the village should find that they absolutely need those acres in order to do affordable housing, they can condemn even lands under easement. If there's roads, you know that condemnation happens all across this country for the purposes of roads, if they need to facilitate a proper road opening into Cooking Ham West, all of that can be done. As far as housing, you know, the one thing I would like to add is, we've heard a lot about the importance of Red Hook stepping up to the plate and adding housing to the inventory because there is in fact a housing crisis. And I sat on that county study that was referenced, I think Agatha you referenced. But I will say that, you know, we feel that we're very much doing our part. The number of housing units over the last several years is dramatically up. You may or may not be aware that there is a large amount of housing that is about to be constructed in the village of Red Hook. And so when we talk about expanding out onto farmlands, we also must remember that smart growth, of which growth is one of those words, also calls for us to look at infill housing and infill development. And there's quite a bit of it coming. Red Hook Comments is going to have another phase built pretty soon. That was part of the agreement and also the approvals. And there's also a 57-unit development, which was approved off of Baxter and Fisk, which I'm told by the villages coming back on the docket. We have, you know, 11 homes over in the township about to be constructed. So we have quite a bit of housing coming up, and we've taken steps over the years with our centers and green space to incentivize infill development. We've targeted, we did the most difficult work that a community can do, and many of them decide where they don't want development, but most of them don't decide also where they do want development. And we did that difficult work, and we identified our traditional neighborhood district. And we have 102 homes, more than half of which have already been constructed over the last couple of years, going up. Interestingly enough, people in our community are moving from other homes into that development and freeing up housing within our community. So we're both addressing the issues of quality, sorry, quantity, and also of affordability by having dedicated and help facilitated affordable housing with third-year covenants on it. So it's not to say that there isn't more work to be done, because we do feel that we need to do as much as we can to help address this issue, but just suffice to say that there's a lot of housing coming online quite soon and in the form of infill development, almost all of that. So that's my long-winded response to some of the comments, and I really very much appreciate. I'm really inspired. I want to say that there are so many people in our community who feel passionate about this subject, because we feel strongly about this subject too, though we may not be in a position, unfortunately, to give you what you want on the west side. We feel strongly about this topic as well. So I hope that we will be able to, you know, address this in many other ways. I hope our housing committee can come back to us and talk to us about whether or not we should mandate a portion of every major subdivision be dedicated to affordable housing like they do in many programs in New York City and elsewhere. You know, I'm ready to entertain those kinds of things. So I hope that, you know, that kind of stuff does come before us. All right, enough talking on my part. Anything else? Bill, anything you'd like to say?
What I would just say is that this is not a rash or a rushed decision. This is something that the board has given a considerable amount of time and conversation to. We take your comments seriously, even if they come at the last minute. And we recognize that, and myself included, that there are times that I get disappointed that it doesn't always go out the way I want it to go. But a very wise person who I worked with, an attorney, once told me that the best outcome is often one where everybody is not entirely happy. And I've lived by that credo because it's about compromise. It's about making sure that you address all the issues. And in this case, after I've given a lot of thought, all the different moving parts to this and all the issues, I feel perfectly... I think the decision to acquire the west without doing housing the way we did on the east is appropriate. I know people disagree with me. I respect that. But I think it's important that we have the conversation and that we get the input, and I think that that's helpful in thinking things through. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks, Bill. Christine, did you want to add anything?
I think that, you know, you pretty much hit everything. I do, and one thing I do want to address is someone's comment that the owner has no leverage to be making any demands, which is definitely not true. And, you know, we are working cooperatively with the owner, but they certainly had options besides this one. And so, you know, there were terms presented, and those are the things that, you know, we're trying to negotiate, but you have to work with what you have. So I just think that, you know, I don't want anyone to, you know, make assumptions or think badly about the owner, and, you know, they have realities that they're dealing with also. And so, you know, as I said, it's been a very cooperative negotiation, I guess if that makes sense to say it like that. And I do, again, feel that we are, you know, we, even though this farm is on two sides of the road, we really have to look at it as a whole, it's a whole farm. And so I think that we are getting the very best project, the best result that we can get for Red Hook. And, you know, everybody may not agree on what that is, but, you know, operating within the confines of what we had to operate within, to negotiate with, I do feel strongly that we got the very best project that we could get.
Thank you, Christine. As usual, well said. Okay, so we do have both resolutions 61. Here's the land use map for the folks at home, just so you can see. Here are some of the trails that'll be on the farm. Here are some reserved areas you've heard Kenny speak about, some of the complexes. These are outlined in red. And then these areas are reserved for other purposes and not for agriculture. And here's the farm, which is currently being farmed right now. Here's the portion of the land, Abrams Park, that's approaching, so we will solve that issue as well. And the village will get some more land for their park and be able to connect to the town's park as well. All right, let's go to resolution number 61, approving the use of monies. Again, this is just a follow-up to our purchase approvals we had here on the purchase a couple of months ago. Folks had asked about the timeliness of this. The property is expected to close in a couple of weeks, and so here we are today. So plus or minus 115 acres, the tax parcel's listed in the resolution. Talking about how many acres are prime and how many acres, 45 are statewide importance. Talking about the contributions of our land trust partner, Sinek Hudson. Duchess Land Conservancy will administer the easement and monitor it as well. Talking about where the funding is coming from, the portion from the Community Preservation Fund, which is up to $815,000 including closing costs to cover both the conservation easement but parklands, trails, drinking water protection, and other open space objectives. Who would like to move resolution number 61? Christine, how did I know?
Second, I.
And myself, in favor. Resolution passed.
Could you just do a roll call real quick, just for the architect?
That's a motion by Christine Kane, a second by Bill Hamel, and an eye by myself. And again, thank you all very much for caring and for being here and sharing your thoughts. Okay, we're going to skip on resolution again, re-resolution if we will. We're going to go right to, in previous meetings, if you've been following along, we've been looking at truck routes. We had our meeting with DOT. They explained this sort of novelty, that there are certain tractor trailers that are 53 feet that can only go on designated truck routes, but then every tractor trailer that I think is 48 feet can go on any state highway. And so for designated trucking routes, the long and short of it is, they suggest that we go back to where we always wanted to be, which was just to say, we want to regulate any unnecessary truck traffic on the town roads. And so we modified our local law that we passed several months ago. We're now not calling out truck routes. We're leaving that to the state to handle, although, you know, someday it should, it's worthy of a conversation as we continue to discuss the impact on 9 and 9G of the truck traffic there. So there's a modification to that law. It's now being combined with our efforts to streamline the process. You've heard me talk about being more efficient as we update our stop sign law. And so this local law takes into account that, so we don't have to change the law and we're timing it at a stop sign, which is the definition of insanity government-wise and the costs associated with that. And so that's what this local law now looks like to be put up for a public hearing, which I would suggest we put for September. We don't typically do a second August meeting, but I think we may need to have a special meeting, in fact, this Thursday, to get that fourth town board member to do that bond resolution again on the border storage tank. September 12, Dana, yes, is our first meeting of the month.
I'll check.
So I would suggest that we...
Yes.
Call for the 7:35. September 12. Does that work?
And I just want to point out that there's a copy of the roads list that's in your packet that would be in the appendix to the law, and then there's a separate vehicles and traffic inventory of traffic devices that would become a separate inventory. So this is the draft of that.
Right.
And the version that we had submitted highlighted Elm Street, that I wanted the board to know that this is the copy from the existing code, plus Elm Street. Okay, that's the change that was made, because you can't see the change in here.
Right. Okay. Okay. Good. Well, I look forward to being more efficient with this task. Okay, so let's set the public hearing. Who would like to make that motion?
Some move.
Okay. That, did we get a resolution? So we did 62?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
7:35 on September 12, and Bill has moved that.
Second?
Thank you, Christine, myself, I, thank you very much. Okay, St. Margaret's, historic St. Margaret's. Much like the Red Park West was sitting there for many years before we were able to improve it with trails and a ball field, and hopefully soon, some more fields. St. Margaret's has been sitting, with the exception of exterior work, we are now in the process through some of the grants that we've been able to obtain. that we've been able to obtain and potentially some ARFA money, able to work on the inside. So now we have a solicitation for plumbing work. So we received a grant to make the building ADA accessible. Just to remind folks at home, it was not ADA accessible to get in the building. It was not ADA accessible to get up from the first floor to the second floor. We got a grant for accessibility parking and entrance. We got a grant for a lift, a clear lift, by the way. And a grant for ADA accessible bathrooms. So that's what we're looking at now, is going out to bid for the plumbing and to rebid the HVAC equipment since we only received one bid timely. And we rejected that bid. So we've got all the bid documents. If you have problems sleeping, folks, you may want to look at some of the bidding documents. It can really do wonders. And when are we calling for the return of these now? On the 30th? Okay, so that gives them 22 days. That should be enough. Resolution 63. I think I have a...
Yep, you're in.
Yep, sorry.
Okay. Having been born on 63, I'll move that one.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Bill?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is approved. Okay, folks, that's pretty much the business. We did have some more correspondence. I think it was a lot of it was referenced in the beginning. Hart wrote us a letter. He was not here to speak to that. Sarah wrote us a letter. She was not there to speak to that. I think that we had... I think we wrapped up everybody else's. Who's... Do whatever's in it.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler, thank you.
Tyler.
Tyler, thank you, Tyler. Yes, we did get one from Tyler very much. And Frank?
Frank Midlerell.
And Frank Midlerell, yes.
And for people who gave testimony just in person, would you like written copies of that at all or is it put in the record as stated here?
It gets put in the minutes. But if you'd like to also submit it written down, your thoughts, that's fine. That's helpful, too.
And also, it's been required on Panda for anybody to watch anytime.
Okay, very good. Again, thank you all very much for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Christine?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thanks again.